Call this meeting of the Urbana City Council, meeting as a committee of the whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shanoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Whelan?
Here.
Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satherweight?
Here.
We need a, oh, are there any additions to the agenda? Any additions to the agenda? Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting, October the 11th. Do we have a motion? Is there any, first of all, any additions or deletions?
Second.
Moved and seconded? No additions, no deletions?
Aye.
Satisfaction? Total?
Aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes?
You skipped over staff report, is there?
Yes, I called for it.
Oh, there wasn't? Okay. I'm sorry to hear that. Okay.
Oh, time for public input. Always favorite time. And the first item on, first person on the agenda is Carl Hill. Carl, would you like to address us regarding the tax rebate program?
Good evening. My name's Carl Hill, 1913 Trails Drive here in Urbana. I wanted to encourage all of you, if you're going to be seeing information tonight, on the tax rebate program. Little bit of information, we just had a Build Urbana Home Parade, more or less, this past weekend, yesterday. And this spring, when we were going to do our full-fledged, we might say, home parade, we had maybe three homes that we could have in it, so we decided to postpone it till next year. Next year, the showcase of homes put on by the Home Builder Association will be at Stone Creek subdivision, so we thought we would piggyback on that and do our Build Urbana Home Parade about the same time. This fall, a couple people asked me if we were going to do a parade this year, and come to find out, we ended up with about 27 homes yesterday that were open. So between spring and this fall, we've now been able to produce some inventory, so that people looking for homes in Urbana have something to choose from. So I think this is a, it's a great thing, it's indicative that the Build Urbana program is still alive and well, and we need to keep on building Urbana. So I'm asking for your support in extending the program, probably for another two years, much like we've done in the past. We have so far this year, I know each year you kind of get an update, and I'm assuming that John is going to update you some on more specifics, but 149 permits so far this year for single-family and duplex, that would be for 151 dwelling units. And the low end of that is around 20 million in value, it's probably more like 25 to 30 million that we've added to the assessment rolls for the city of Urbana. So I'm still thinking it's a win-win situation for everybody, so I'm just asking your support in continuing that program.
Very good, Carl. You said you had, what, 27 homes?
We had 27 homes open yesterday.
Yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful.
Around six, seven different subdivisions.
Great. Same quality, as beautiful quality as all the homes you've built?
Well, you put me on the spot there.
Yeah.
They're all great. Yeah, we had everything from, we had some in the lower end at 110, 120,000, and on up to about 380,000. So there's quite an array of homes out there.
Wow. That's great. Great. Congratulations.
It's been working good. And thanks to you all for supporting us.
Any questions? Compliments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next person to speak on the agenda is John Farney.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. Two items I'd like to speak to, both concerning mostly the southeast Urbana area, two things on your agenda tonight. First, the Build Urbana program. I think it's a wonderful program. We built our house in Urbana. We moved in in the spring of 2002, and I look forward to receiving that rebate check each year. And over the weekend, we went through the homes in our subdivision in Savannah Green. And they're wonderful homes. The neighborhood is expanding by leaps and bounds, and so it's a great program, and I really hope you continue with that program, because I think it's really helping the city of Urbana expand and bring in quality, single-family homes, which is something we need to have, building neighborhoods, which is a great thing. On the Phila Road Action Plan, over the weekend, I was looking over it, and a couple of things that concerned me, living amongst the empty buildings in the Kmart and Jerry's IGA areas, made me think that one of the things that the city, I really hope, is considering in this plan, is going out and making a real, strong effort to advertise Urbana. We need to be marketing Urbana as a place where businesses can come in and create jobs and stimulate growth. The former attitude that Urbana was a bad place for business, we need to make sure that's erased, because I think Urbana is a good place to do business. I live here, I shop here, I love Urbana, and I think that the more people that get that message, it's only the better things that will happen here. So I really encourage you to look at that, really marketing the city of Urbana as the good place to bring in more growth through businesses than it is. The thing that concerns me the most from reading over the surveys, is existing businesses in southeast Urbana, in the Phila Road area, said 82 percent of the businesses did not know that there were funds, loans, programs available from the city. And that's a staggering number, to say 82 percent of your businesses don't know that the city is there to help. And that help is what's going to make southeast Urbana grow and revitalize. And so anything you can do to get the message across to area businesses, stay in Urbana, we're here to work with you, we're going to help you succeed, I think it'll be a great thing for Urbana, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions? John, I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thanks, sir.
As a matter of fact, our community development department is working on a program like that, and that's what's on the agenda. There's been some very aggressive steps planned for such a thing. I talked with the Aldi people myself the other day, and just to tell you that I suggested they move to Phila Road, take over the old IGA store. No, they don't want that, they're marketing people. But anyway, that's the thing, and that's the thought, and I totally agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to inject my own opinion there, but I agree. It's in my ward. Drive through there every day, and my ward, as you know, is very extensive, but can see that happening, I mean, that emptiness there is a shame, just a tragedy.
Mm-hmm.
Next item on the agenda, that is all the public input that we have, is there anybody else who would like to address us for any reason? The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2004-11-023R, a resolution extending the Build Urbana Tax Rebate Program for two additional years to December 1, 2006, Build Urbana. Yeah, would you please give us a?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Whelan. The Build Urbana Tax Rebate Program has successfully increased the rate of owner-occupied residential development since March of 2001 in Urbana. And the positive comments that we regularly receive from developers like Mr. Hill, who spoke to you already today, are routinely received from the development community as well as homeowners. And so we're coming here this evening to ask the council to continue the program for another two years to December 1, 2006. The program itself rebates the difference between the property taxes paid between Champaign and Urbana by new homeowners. The rebates will run for five years. Now, the program itself was started due to the relatively low home start rates, single-family and owner-occupied home start rates, in the Twin City market. And the city and the Urbana Developers and Business Association, which is currently the UVA, undertook this program in order to increase the amount of owner-occupied housing starts in Urbana. In conjunction with that, the UVA and the city have also promoted the program with materials that have been developed, advertising programs, press releases, speaking engagements, and tours, such as this past weekend's Parade of Homes. Because of the effectiveness of the program, in November of 2002, the council decided to extend the program to its current deadline of December 1, 2004. Since the start of the program, owner-occupied housing starts have increased dramatically. Some of our highlight years, in 2002, we saw 178 home starts under the program, 165 in 2003, and as Carl mentioned, to date, 149 starts in 2004. And this includes duplexes as well as other owner-occupied residences. That adds up to a total of 575 homes, with all the years that have been included in the program for the Build Urbana home starts. Some of the developments that have utilized the program have been Berenger Commons, Eagle Ridge, Fairway Estates, Landis Farm, Lincolnwood, Southridge, Stone Creek, Sunny Estates, Prairie Winds, and Savannah Green. And the Build Urbana Tax Rebate Program has become an important part of their marketing campaigns and their efforts to continue to finish up those developments, as they're already started, and this will be an integral component in them achieving build-out of these housing developments. Now, Urbana's owner-occupied housing start rate is comparable to Champaign's. As I mentioned, the program was started because of a relatively low rate, and now we compare to Champaign, which actually twice the population that we do, and we feel that we've accomplished the appropriate position in the marketplace with regards to owner-occupied housing starts. Staff has routinely come to the council and updated them on the status of Build Urbana, as well as gone to the school and park districts in Cunningham Township. These other taxing districts are supporting and active participants in the program. The fiscal impacts of the Build Urbana program are very positive. The program will net over $1 million annually for the development that occurred from 2001 through 2003. The annual return to the taxing districts overall is seven to one on their investment in the program. The council extended the program in 2001 to include zero-lot line townhouses, condominiums, and duplexes. We need some clarification at this point, in order to ensure that the program is applied only to new owner-occupied houses with ground lease components. So staff comes here today and recommends to you that you extend the Build Urbana program to December 1, 2006, and apply it to extend the program to those permits for permanent owner-occupied, single-family, duplex, zero-lot line, and condominium housing with ground lease components. Questions?
Danielle.
Yes, I think that the data on this program shows that it's been very successful, and I support this extension. With that said, I have a question, which is that I'm trying to understand what our target is. I mean, I understand our larger vision, which is to increase rooftops, to fill our existing infrastructure that's already been paid for, to stimulate residential and particularly business growth in that area. So, but I'm wondering if, kind of what is the gauge by which we need to measure our success, and whether or not we've hit a target? So is our goal to build out all of our infrastructure, and we'll continue to kind of look at extending Build Urbana until we do that, or are we going to have comparable builds to Champaign per capita for X number of years, at which point, I'm just trying to get a sense of, at what point do we say, you know, we've done this, it's been successful, and now it's time to maybe divert our resources to a different priority? Again, I think this is the right place for our resources now, but I'm trying to understand what our target is.
I would say, one of those items, that being increasing the rates of these owner-occupied housing starts was the goal. I would say the limitation, and maybe, in effect, a subsequent goal, is completing the developments that have been started, and completing build-out, to the extent that infrastructure is supporting it.
And what's your sense of where we're at in terms of build-out? Fortunately, I wasn't able to go to the Parade of Homes yesterday, so I don't have a visual picture of it, I only have numbers, but in terms of percentages, maybe Carl will know this better, or the mayor, you know, what are we looking at in terms of building out existing subdivisions? Are we at 50%, 80%, 90%?
I don't know, I would say, just off the top of my head, it can't be any more than 50%.
Okay.
And, you know, one of the things that we took a look at when we started this program, and started, you know, trying to jump-start some of the development in southeast Urbana, was what is the capacity of our, what is our service capacity right now? And what can we, how much more area can we serve without putting a huge amount of investment? And part of that is driven by fire service, where, you know, if you keep growing, you need additional fire substations and so forth. And, you know, we felt generally that we can serve all the way out to Windsor and 130 with the existing fire station on South Phila Road, without any additional investment, either in personnel or in a new station or equipment. And so that's a real driving factor for us. And so, but at this point, when you take a look at the amount of vacant space that is still left in southeast Urbana, west of 130 and north of Windsor Road, there's still quite a bit of vacant ground there, some of it's not even an extent to the city. And we know that developers are trying to acquire more of that property, so that, you know, we can see not only these subdivisions fill out, but possibly some additional phases and new phases or new subdivisions as well.
Okay.
We've got a lot to go before we fill that service area out.
I have to refer you to, now life gets interesting, page five on my next report.
Page five?
On my next report.
Oh, yeah.
Which shows the potential for the total amount of homes to be constructed to be over 2,000, and I think we're just under 600.
Okay, that's very helpful, to get that sense.
So, yeah, the mayor's correct, we're not even up to halfway yet.
But your point is a good one, you know, at what point do we say this has been a successful program? And, you know, how long do we continue it? And, you know, if we go ahead and pass this tonight, you know, we'll be, you know, before we bring it back again, we'll obviously do an evaluation and say, is it appropriate to continue it? Or is there enough energy in that area for it to run on its own? And so, you know, that's always a question that we have to ask ourselves, and I think when we asked ourselves that this year, and knowing that this two years was running out, we said, yeah, it's a good thing to go ahead and do that, particularly since, you know, the investment, as you say, is not really a cash investment on our part, it's a rebate of taxes and revenue that we otherwise would not have gotten. And so we believe that at this time, it's a valuable thing to do.
Thanks. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We would need a motion for Resolution Number 2004. Ms. Wyman?
I move we send resolution, or do we just need to pass this tonight, or should we send, do we need to send it to council?
Send it to council.
Okay, I move that we send to council Resolution Number 2004-11-023R, a resolution extending the Build Urbana Tax Rebate Program for two additional years to December 1, 2006, with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that this be sent to council for, with a, with a resolution of approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, yes, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I just want to thank the committee for doing a good job, and also the cooperation between Hillshire, Tatman, Atkins, and the school district, and the park district, and Cunningham Township, which goes to show you that everybody is for this project. So thank you.
Mr. Hayes, you speak for all of us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Next item on the agenda is the Phila Road Business District Revitalization Report and Action Plan. It's brought to our attention by the Community Development Department, and I, you haven't moved out of your chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Earlier this year, the staff presented to you a report on the economic conditions in the Phila Road Business District. And that report indicated that national market trends, as well as local development trends towards interstate access, retail, deep discounting, and supersizing of large-venue retailers, outmoded the large retail venues that currently exist in the Phila Road Business District. But basic and niche businesses continue to succeed there. Local housing has also been increasing, however, and the southeast Urbana area is actually one of Champaign-Urbana's fastest-growing residential areas, and demographics show the results of that, of course, with increased housing rates and also increased population. Some of the information we've updated in this report shows that a household income of $39,000, as opposed to $31,000 in our previous report, because this report includes data to the year 2003. The result of the neighborhood, the result of these housing trends, and the result of these national marketing trends, as well as infrastructure trends such as relocation of Highway 130 to High Cross Road, has been that we currently have a neighborhood business district in the Phila Road area, and it provides necessities and conveniences to southeast Urbana residents and beyond that area. This facet of the economy has helped stabilize the traffic patterns, which we initially identified in that study, and also has stabilized many of the small businesses in the area. The infrastructure in the Phila Road Business District is substantial, and it's also being improved. Remember that Phila Road is arterial, albeit a secondary arterial, and it crosses a feeder street, so this particular intersection in a business district lying in one of the fastest-growing residential areas in the Twin Cities, provides a market base for this area to build on. Staff also gave you an update last month with some of the action items that have been undertaken in the Phila Road Business District, including the road construction that's currently being conducted in the Prairie Winds development, as well as the ongoing plan for road construction in 2006 on Phila Road itself. Also, our business directory is being developed, we informed you about our sign-and-banner developments, marketing efforts, our surveys and meetings that were being conducted, as well as the incentive program that you improved. And also, we informed you on our beautification planning and action activities. Some of the highlights of the surveys we conducted, from our residential developers and business surveys, as well as meetings, include some of the following. From our residential survey, we saw that 86 percent of those that responded to the survey shop in this Phila Road Business District more than once a week, and that more than half of them live more than a half-mile away, which indicates an outlying market to the area, it's not just a neighborhood area to conduct business in. This reaches out into two and three miles for the Urbana community, as well as in the neighboring communities. Loyalty was a strong factor with the respondents, with 69 percent of them saying they wouldn't shop any less if new stores, new large retailers such as Walmart were opened in the area. And also, that was a top-written comment when people were asked why they shopped in the Sunny Crest Phila Business District, is that they were loyal to their Urbana businesses. Some of the new businesses that residents wanted were general merchandise and restaurants, as we would assume. And their thoughts on utilizing the available buildings at the Kmart and the Jerry's IGA site were to either put new businesses in those facilities or tear them down and put new businesses up there. So redevelop for new business or put new business in those facilities. The majority of the residents felt that building appearances needed to be improved throughout the area, the greater area, not just in the business district itself. And that within the business district, incentives would help to improve this. And perhaps, it's probably a visual aspect, but this was a thread and a recurring theme through all the input that we got, about improving the appearance of the area. And maybe it's just an obvious reaction or obvious observation, but we saw everybody in the business end and the residential end saying, improve the properties in the neighborhood and the business district. Developers felt that the area has potential, but it needs some improvement. And some of those improvements include road improvements, which include wider roads going to Windsor, as well as to Highway 130, which means Florida Avenue and Phila Road. And to clean up the appearance of the area, pick up litter and retrieve stray carts, and enforce nuisance codes, and strengthen them where needed. Also, beautification of the landscape was desired, with lighting and landscaping and improvements in walkways and bikeways. Developers also cited areas where they could participate in improvement of the area, development of available land or outlots in the area into strip malls and dining venues was suggested. And also, reuse of vacant buildings had a lot of input from our developers. And some of those suggestions are found on page nine of your report, including office development, conference centers, medical offices, research park, technical schools, government buildings, and recreational uses. Developers also felt that a tax increment finance district would be advisable to be established in this area if it was feasible. So we'll continue to work with our developers to see if we can find projects of the magnitude that can drive a tax increment finance district. Our research on the websites show similar reuses throughout the nation for available large retailers, including government facilities, retail and restaurants, community centers, and educational uses. Our business surveys and meetings showed us that although closings are a concern to our businesses that exist in this area, they are very positive about their future, which reflects a previous survey which showed 65 of them indicating that their business was increasing, and 55 percent indicating that they would be expanding into the future. And local businesses in the area felt that the expanding housing base was a positive factor in their survival and their success. Areas that they felt needed improvement were incentives like downtown, assisting with facade improvements and landscaping, also improving traffic controls in the parking areas, which landscaping can help accomplish. Also, they cited development of outlots with upscale shopping opportunities like we have in other shopping areas in the community and throughout the Twin City area. Some of the businesses that are existing businesses thought would be good ideas were coffee shops and restaurants, bookstores, and general merchandise. In order to address these relatively convergent ideas for the development of the Phila Road Business District, the Phila Road Action Plan was developed, and it's listed on page 13 of your report. To summarize real quickly, it includes in chronological order the improvement of the image of the Phila Road Business District, or creating a more positive impression that current shoppers and new shoppers have in the area. Retaining our existing businesses, which is critical to stabilize the economic climate in the area, as well as getting new ideas and support for projects to be out there. And enhancing incentives, which we, of course, did several weeks ago to make it more flexible and to assist some of the target needs that we feel we have, like development of outlots. Also, planning construction of infrastructure improvements, and this could go to the top of the list, but fortunately, we have the construction on Colorado Avenue and the Prairie Winds development, as well as the planned reconstruction of Phila Road here in 2006. Also, beautifying the Phila Road Business District is one of our action steps, and this winter we'll be undertaking a beautification study to see how we can not only landscape our public infrastructure, our roadways, and our medians, but also to see how we can help private businesses improve their landscaping as well. And providing marketing assistance for the businesses that are available, as well as the existing businesses in the area. And investigating our building uses, using those good ideas from our developers. And also investigating redevelopment of the actual properties themselves, outlawt development, and maybe reuse of the property on existing buildings, to accomplish higher employment of the land in the area, to establish existing new businesses, establish new businesses and new properties that generate activity. So we're obviously taking advantage of the immediate opportunities we have, and developing more complex approaches through our multifac- more complex approaches through our multifaceted approach outlined. And in this transitional area, where we see transitional economy, we can undertake some new approaches towards developing the Phila Road Business District.
Any questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
Looks like you've done a lot of work recently. This is great. It was very helpful to look through this update and to kind of target specific action goals. I have a couple of questions. One is, there was some discussion in here about exploring, and it's in the action plan to explore a TIF district in this area. Do you have a sense of what the timeline would be for that? What kinds of, what the process looks like? What barriers we might be facing?
Well, the barrier is to find the kinds of projects that would be the driver for a tax increment finance district. Obviously, you have to have significant improvements in your tax base and equalized valuations to try and tackle such a project. So, that's why we're going to continue to work with our developers and see what kind of ideas that are feasible we can establish. If they're large enough, we can take a look at that. If they're substantial enough to actually support that kind of a program. If not, we'll have to utilize other alternatives.
I have a secondary question, which is, have we taken the Director of the EDC through the large buildings that could be used for different uses? Okay, so she's surveyed those buildings?
Yes, actually, and we have actually toured several of those facilities with prospects.
Okay. Because I, although I'm not in this kind of business sector, so I don't, I'm not an expert, but I can imagine, based on some of the interest in the property so far, that actually the neighborhood business component would probably be much closer to the Phila Road area. And the concept of, you know, a boulevard, making it more pedestrian-friendly, the banners, the theme would really fit that. And then, the areas that are behind could, would more likely be call centers, the storage space like we had, these kinds of more, less kind of storefront retail uses and more office, light manufacturing.
Employment centers.
Employment centers, et cetera, these things. So, it seems like they're a real partner. The EDC is a real partner in this, in that those are the kinds of folks that they're looking for outside of our county to draw into the county. And of course, we're always looking for available properties. Those are all my questions for now. Actually, on the TIF district issue, I hear the barrier, I guess the timeline really depends on finding that project more than anything else, so it's open-ended at this point. Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Wyman?
On the TIF district, I think maybe it was a year or two ago, I'm not sure if it was in public or private discussion, that it seemed like a TIF district would be more difficult in the Phila Road area, just as far as getting approval from the school district and park district, since we already have several other TIF districts. Do you think that that attitude is changing, that these other taxing districts might be more willing to support another TIF district in Urbana?
Well, I guess I won't speak for them because we haven't come up with a project to take to them. I guess it'll depend on, you know, how this impacts, you know, the size of the TIF district and how it impacts their, well, their revenues as well as the student population.
Sure.
Obviously, in a business district, it wouldn't increase the student population necessarily. But, with the revenues that could be achieved, they might be interested.
And I don't know if an enterprise zone might be more palatable? Or, I don't know if it would.
That's another alternative. Currently, we just have about two blocks that prevent us, I think, from extending the current enterprise zone. It may be more substantial than that, but just through precursory look at the map, we're kind of locked in by residential areas from extending the current one. So, a new one would have to be established.
Okay. Thank you.
The questions. I have a couple. As I was saying earlier, it strikes me that this area, adjacent to 150, or rather, 130, would be an excellent spinoff for a quieter type of commercial area. And if it was handled handsomely, as some of your picturals here suggest, it could be very attractive. Right now, you have put up those signs that say Urbana, and they're attractive, and they give a taste for what could be done. Your picture here of the Kmart lot with the fantasy trees is an idea, too. That area is blighted. All the way from Windsor Road, I mean, down through there, there's little shops, not good little shops, good cleaners and barber shop and various, and of course, the county market is a good store there. But, it's a blighted area, and I don't know what you can do, frankly, other than provide, as Ms. Wyman suggested, perhaps some help with an enterprise zone, perhaps some kind of a TIF district, if there is such a thing. If there's something in between that's allowable by law, where we could use some federal money to support entrepreneurs developing the area. People who own the properties there are, seems like they've just taken out everything they've claimed from the area. And now, we have that storage center there on Phila Road. What a misuse of a piece of property, in my opinion. If I had the money, I could certainly see, like Mr. Atkins, what he's touched and done so much beautiful things with. But, I was saying to Libby at that one meeting we had that I attended recently, we need a very aggressive, imaginative, prospect-seeking effort to bring people into that area. And in order to do that, maybe conjure up some kind of fantasia that would be appealing to businesses, what is available, seemed to me. Yes, Mayor?
Well, I think, you know, the real strength of a plan like this is that there are a number of different activities. And I think we would be mistaken if we put all our eggs into a basket of, you know, trying to get a big, significant reuse of the big boxes. I think that's ultimately the goal, but there's so many other things that can be done that rely on emphasizing the strengths of the area, of the businesses that are already there, and doing some of those things that help that business district in general with working with the business people that are already there. When you take a look at who has created jobs and who has created the expansion here in Urbana as far as the business sector, you'll find that mostly it is existing businesses that are expanding rather than bringing new businesses in. And that's why I think it's so important to focus on the strengths of the area. You know, I think one of the survey questions said that 65% of the businesses felt that they'd grown in the last five years despite a slow economy, and 55% anticipate expanding in the next five years. Well, it's, those are the people that are going to provide the real success in that area. Do we want to fill up those big boxes? Well, of course, we do. But, we can't put 100% of our effort into those things when the real potential is in working with the people that are already there and seeing what they can do to improve the area and increase the size of their businesses. But, you know, I think we need to, I think this is a very thoughtful plan that has laid out some, you know, short-term, mid-range, and long-range planning goals here. And if we, if we actually follow this plan, I think there's a good chance that that area will, again, reach its potential.
Thank you, Mayor. Economic development has many phases to it. And one, of course, very important and most important and easiest to accommodate is the retention of existing businesses. And that's what you're talking about, Mayor. And that certainly makes a lot of sense. But, at the same time, I think some imagination that could go beyond that. I'll tell you a story about, in New York, when I lived there, years and years and years ago, the Bloomingdale's was a store that was on Third Avenue. And there was a Third Avenue L there. This was preceding the Second World War. And they scrapped the Third Avenue L. It was down the street underneath where a lot of Irish bars, mind you, and pawn shops and second-hand clothing stores. It was really a pretty trashy area. And they scrapped the Third Avenue L and sold the steel to Japan, who later made bullets from it and gave it back to us. But, in that case, after that happened, I mean, the Third Avenue, there was a gentleman by the name of Frank Chase came along, and with great imagination, he was an engineer. Frank Chase, later the president of Neiman Marcus, developed Bloomingdale's, turned it into a upper-scale, the store we know of today, Bloomies, which is, of course, known across the country. And it was, at one time, two brothers, two of the Bloomingdale brothers, had little offices on one of the floors and linoleum floors, and it was just a terrible store. And old Mr. Frank Chase took that store and turned it upside down and brought in men's clothing that could compare with Brooks Brothers and housewares that compared with Swedish housewares and New Yorkian product. And it was imagination. It was something, it was, that had a long-range plan. But, it overcame the whole stretch of Third Avenue, which became fashionable. Antique stores and jewelry stores, et cetera. And to go along with what the mayor says, there were many stores there that were good and worthwhile, and they were helped by this program that was led by the city of New York. Might be a good thing to refer to. In any case, that is possible. It is possible to take an ugly duckling and turn it into a swan. And that's what I'm hoping for, imagination and enthusiasm and vigor, as Senator Kennedy would say. Vigor. And so, thank you very much for listening. Anyway, we need a motion to send this to council, I believe?
This is a report.
Oh, this is the report? Okay. Well, if I may echo what has been said, the report is excellent. I mean, what Ms. Chenoweth has said and the mayor has said, it reflects a great deal of thought, and that's what we need to behind all of this extravaganza. Thank you. Thank you, Libby. Next item on the agenda is something more mundane, but equally important, battery recycling effort by the city. Yes, Mr. Fletcher?
I was contacted several weeks ago by a council member, Wyman, who wanted to investigate and have staff give a little report on the status of battery recycling in the light of Illinois Student Environmental Network's cessation or suspension of their battery recycling program. So, that's the purpose of the memo you have in front of you. This is a brief review. ISDN initiated the battery recycling program for all household batteries back in 2002 for Champaign County residents. They established several drop-offs in both Champaign-Urbana and in University of Illinois. Over the past year and a half, or almost two years, they collected some 7,000 pounds of batteries. They currently have accumulated some 2,000 pounds of batteries for which they have no funds to pay for battery processing, so hence, they suspended the program. It costs ISDN just about a dollar a pound to recycle these batteries. A little further background, household batteries are generally categorized into two types, rechargeable and non-rechargeable batteries. Rechargeable batteries are primarily nickel cadmium. You find those in drills, cell phones, screwdrivers, that kind of thing. Non-rechargeable batteries, such as alkaline or button batteries, power flashlights, calculators, watches. The vast majority of household batteries, however, are non-rechargeable alkaline batteries, the typical AA, AAA, C and D, 9-volt batteries. Just to give you a little background on what kind of percentages ISDN collected in the year 2003, 85%, again, the vast majority of those batteries were alkaline, 7% lead, 7% nickel. And then, both lithium, silver, and mercury-containing batteries comprised of less than 1%. In 1996, Congress enacted an act to phase out the use of mercury in batteries and provide for the efficient and cost-effective collection and recycling for mercury and other nickel cadmium batteries. Since that act was established in mid-1996, no alkaline batteries available for sale in the U.S. are manufactured with mercury. However, the act does allow for button batteries to be manufactured with mercury. And the button batteries typically range from 3mg to 11mg, according to the National Electric Manufacturers Association. In Illinois, and Illinois EPA does not require the recycling of any batteries except for those lead-acid batteries that are recycled at the point of purchase at vehicle stores. Staff also conducted about a dozen Illinois cities and found Park Ridge has a similar battery collection program to ISDN's collection program. And those costs typically range from $2,000 to $4,000 a year. In terms of impact to the environment, concern is not the volume of waste that they comprise, but rather the amount of toxicity of their heavy metal components. As I mentioned earlier, it should be recognized that especially for mercury concerns, they're virtually nonexistent in alkaline batteries. However, they are present in button batteries. Heavy metals such as nickel and cadmium are also found in rechargeable batteries. We also presented, I guess, a couple of options for council to look at in terms of whether they should or should not elect to pursue some sort of battery collection program. The first one is that the city could financially assist ISDN for their program for collection of all batteries. Based on their historical information, that would cost anywhere from $3,500 to $4,000 a year. Or, the city could also financially assist ISDN and only collect and recycle rechargeable and button batteries. The cost would be significantly less, only about $500 a year. Third option is, we could develop a city administrative program for either one of the options above, either collection of all batteries or just rechargeable and button batteries without ISDN's involvement. And lastly, we could do nothing. Given the cost of about $4,000 a year to collect batteries, we could, the recycling tax, however, could absorb that on an ongoing annual basis with no significant impact or increase of recycling tax, given the relatively small cost of the program. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions if the members may.
Danny O. first.
A couple of questions. One is, does the city of Urbana, perhaps it's my memory loss, but I believe we have, we support hazardous waste pickups. Is that correct? Or is that something that the city does not currently support?
Well, the city has, over the course of years, has been able to secure has been able to secure grants to perform single, one-day collection events of household hazardous waste materials. The last one that we had, I believe, was in 2003. We usually perform those in conjunction with the city of Champaign and/or Champaign County. And I believe prior to that, we had a collection event in 2001, if my memory serves me correct.
So it's been about every two years? We did not have a collection?
That's right. We did not.
And who administers that?
IEPA administers that. We currently have applications on file with them. IEPA unfortunately was, along with several other state agencies, faced some severe budget cuts. So they certainly have limited financial resources to conduct and offer household hazardous waste events to municipalities statewide. One of the criteria that they use for ranking municipalities for the eligibility of these events are financial contributions on the part of those sponsoring cities and/or counties.
So we don't have any schedule for this year or projected for next year at this point?
No, not at this point in time, no.
And what have we spent? What is the Urbana's contribution to that been in the past? Do you recall?
The only thing that we have spent in the past has been advertising promotional costs, running about $1,500.
Okay.
I guess, my point is, we have never, to date anyway, given any money, significant money, is to try to attract a household hazardous waste event.
Okay. And in that case, it's not recycling, it's just appropriate, essentially landfilling of hazardous waste or whatever appropriate disposal?
Right. I mean, for the communities who are lucky enough to receive the grants, you know, obviously, they're able to properly manage those ways. But for all other Illinois communities, unless they have a program in place, which very few do, the materials are more simply landfill.
Do you, you had said in your memo that the cost could be absorbed by the recycling tax? Does that mean that we have $4,000 in additional revenue from recycling taxes that we bring in after paying for the services?
We have an estimated fund balance that could absorb the $4,000.
That we usually use for promotions and other kinds of things for our use cycle?
No, that would just be an excess fund balance. I mean, we, we, we secondly, tax to pay for our expenditures. However, sometimes we collect more revenue, especially due to new construction, et cetera. So oftentimes, we have more money in our fund balance than our expenditures are.
And my last question is, do you have a sense that there would be any cost savings for the city of Urbana to administer a program like this rather than to outsource it? It sounds like most of the cost isn't, is actually for the recycling itself and not necessarily for staff time or program time or anything like that. So can we find a cheaper place that will recycle the batteries? Or are we generally looking at $4,000, whether it's the city or any other nonprofit?
I think that this is among the lowest prices that you'll find among the processor. I mean, we did canvass some of those processors. And the facility that ISN was using was among the cheapest. So I don't think that we could really secure any other facility for cheaper costs. There are some costs associated with segregating the non-rechargeable from the rechargeable batteries. In fact, the city was receiving the rechargeable batteries from ISN and then we're shipping them off to a battery recycler. The advantage of that was that rechargeable batteries that the city ships are received for no cost.
They're received for no cost?
Processed for no cost, right, because we're a municipality.
And would that continue? Would we be able to have a partnership like that with?
Yes.
Any organization? It sounds like ISN or any other organization kind of plays the kind of free role of setting up collection centers and doing marketing and things like that. And really, the city is just, would be subsidizing the collection of it. In this case, we'd also be helping because we're a municipality in terms of getting free collections of recyclable batteries. Is that correct?
Right. And the city could certainly participate in a partnership, yeah.
That's all I have for now.
Mayor first, please.
Rod, I'd just like to follow up on some of Danielle's questions about household hazardous waste. And when we have done those household hazardous waste events, what has generally been the cost? I know the state has picked up the bulk of that cost. But do you know what the cost of that is for one event?
The event in 2001 ran about 95,000. The one in 2003, I think, was about 110,000 or 15,000. But in terms of quantities, I think the one in 2001, we had like 1,600 participants. We collected over 250 55-gallon drums of materials.
How many?
250 55-gallon drums of materials.
Have any idea comparing that as far as the weight is concerned to compare to other?
I don't know what that would equate to in weight. I would have to go back and try to check some other data. But it would be significant to be in dozens of tons.
So for, when there was a state-sponsored household hazardous waste event, about $100,000. And then we were able to use our local dollars on the order of, what, a few thousand dollars from Champaign, Urbana, and the county for the marketing of it?
Right.
And so our small investment was able to leverage a large investment from the state and diverting our properly landfilling, well, it sounds like possibly several, many tons of hazardous material.
Correct.
All right. So if, and you were saying, as far as the point system for getting a household hazardous waste event in our community, that the state does look at a local contribution. Is it dollar-for-dollar? I mean, the more you contribute, the better your chances of getting?
Absolutely.
Getting one? Do they give us an actual, do they actually show us the formula of how?
I was able to obtain that formula verbally.
Verbal, so, okay. Yeah, so you're saying that they don't actually publish that formula? But it's something, we have an idea of how it's calculated?
Right.
I guess, you know, the point I'm getting to is if we make a decision, if we do have a little extra money, what is the best use of that money in either keeping hazardous waste out of the landfill when they should be more properly landfilled? And, you know, or recycling? I mean, if you're saying that most of these alkaline batteries today pose no threat as far as toxicity in regard to heavy metals, then it's the diversion, I mean, the benefit that you get is diverting it out of the landfill. Is that right?
By and large, yes.
So, I mean, and the volume of those batteries is relatively small compared to, you know, the volume of cardboard or plastic or anything like that. And so when we're paying a dollar a pound for diverting that small volume out of the landfill, and I think you were telling me what it's about?
Two tons, two tons a year, yeah.
Yeah, a dollar. And our current neighborhood, the neighborhood recycling program diverts about 20 pounds of material. Is that right?
Based on our current quantities, it costs us about seven cents a pound.
Seven cents a pound? Yeah, so it would be maybe pounds. So, I don't know, it'd be helpful maybe to put some of these in a chart so that we, so if we do have extra money to put to recycling, that we can figure out what's the best way of spending that money. Is it batteries? Is it, you know, trying to attract a household hazardous waste event? Is it, you know, some other kind of diversion from the landfill? I think we should, you know, be looking at a variety of options and see what gives us the most impact.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Ms. Wyman?
I have questions on a few issues related to this. First is with the batteries that do contain these sorts of elements that we want to keep out of, the landfills, the mercury, the nickel, that sort of thing. Those found mostly in watches, calculators, and what else? What other household-type items?
Well, basically, all button batteries.
And the button batteries, like what you have in your Palm Pilot, or?
Right, the size of the button.
Okay.
The size of the button.
Okay.
Those in particular contain mercury levels anywhere from 3 to 11mg each.
Just commenting on some of the comments on the hazardous waste, household hazardous waste pickup. I think it's, though it's not directly related to the battery recycling, it's obviously a good, I think, an important program and one that the city should look into supporting. And we don't have to, the city doesn't have to take, doesn't have just one pot of money to look at. The money's all green. But as far as priorities, I think it makes sense to look at all sorts of funds, to look at where we could support a hazardous waste pickup, hopefully on an annual basis, and work with the city of Champaign and the county to be able to afford that and make it available. But as far as the battery recycling, I think it would make sense for the city to at least administer a program that allows for the recycling of the most dangerous or the button batteries that are the most toxic. But also to be able to expand the number of locations that offer the pickup, to not only have a city location, I presume in the lobby here where anyone could come at any time of day or night just to drop off their batteries, but also places that sell watches and calculators and Palm Pilots throughout the community to at least offer that sort of pickup or collection there when people are looking to get new watches or calculators or those sorts of items. As well as the traditional locations, if those would be useful, I suppose, for the rechargeable batteries and those sorts, strawberry fields and other places that have had it. So I guess, it seems to me from this report, or I think it would make sense to at least do, to collect the rechargeables and the button batteries and to not just have it at the places that ISN had it, but to expand it to the city and to places where there'd most likely be an exchange. And I'm thinking just of some of the jewelry places or places where people buy their watches and those sorts of items that contain these button batteries. But at the same time, looking for funds, starting to explore funds to be able to support a hazardous waste pickup sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Ms. Pad? Oh, no further? Ms. Chenoweth?
Just a few follow-up comments based on the conversation. There's a couple of issues here. One is, you know, we have some resources that are available to kind of expand what Urbana does in terms of recycling. And I know we've had conversations before about commercial recycling. And actually, you put together a very helpful kind of statistic sheet on what are the waste streams coming out of Urbana. And I remember distinctly, at the time, the biggest waste stream came from demolition and housing construction. So, and that's kind of this area we haven't even necessarily looked at. And I know other communities, since we have a landscape recycling center, I know other communities, you know, more kind of forward-thinking communities have thought of ways in which people can dispose of, or actually recycle some of the building materials, like 2x4s and lumber and things like that. And I wonder if some of that excess, we could think about looking at our biggest waste stream and seeing if we can invest in kind of recycling pieces of what comes out of that waste stream. The second, I think in terms of priorities, so, you know, demolition is big just because of volume. And that came out of your report. I would put on par with that, another priority would be toxic materials and hazardous materials. And so when we talk about batteries, and then we also hear that we haven't had a hazardous waste pickup in two years and we won't have for another year, or it will look like we won't have for two years, I think that we can maybe take a step back and look at the larger picture and see, is there some way that we can do, if, you know, if we can't get, we can try to pursue state funds. And if we can't pursue state funds, what can we do here locally? You know, in my mind, I think of, having drop-off locations is great. I also think that we actually have a recycling program where almost, pretty much every resident in the city of Urbana has somebody come to their home at some point and pick up recycling on a regular basis. We also have landscape materials recycled, you know, in the fall months. I wonder if there's some way in which we could do kind of a one-day every year where we do a pickup of toxic materials and that we figure out some way to incorporate that into our, with our current service providers. I know that we recently signed a contract with them. But I think there's nothing that says we can't go back to the table to talk about kind of increasing the scope of the kind of pickup that they do. So that would be something, I'm not sure exactly where those wastes go. And that would have to be worked out with IEPA or wherever the hazardous waste went. But I can imagine something that's even more comprehensive than the kind of battery program that we've had. And look, uses our current infrastructure to make that happen. And in many ways, hazardous waste isn't just about keeping the waste out of the landfills. What's important about getting toxics out of the homes is, you know, in terms of safety for children and things like that, is getting toxic waste out of the home so that there's not that kind of access. And then, you know, the last thing in terms of priorities with excess revenues, I think, is to look at supporting limited retail recycling, where we take our multifamily homes, our multifamily recycling program, multi-unit recycling program, and we actually extend it using kind of the same infrastructure and the same toters to things like, you know, for example, the art mart, which, who does not, they do not recycle their glass or aluminum cans. And yet, they have a constant stream that's probably comparable to an apartment complex or less. So there's nothing that says we can't kind of look at expanding to very specific targeted markets to kind of capture aluminum, paper, and glass. So I know that that's not the conversation entirely on the table. But I think when we look at one particular proposal, it's kind of useful to step back and, as the mayor said, kind of look at the whole hazardous material problem that we have in our community and how we haven't been able to fund that with the, with state monies. And is there some way in which we can set up something that's sustainable for Urbana with or without state monies?
Ms. Wyman?
I just wanted to piggyback on a couple extra thoughts after hearing Ms. Chenoweth speak. Actually, one of the items that Ms. Chenoweth mentioned, which is expanding the multifamily recycling to businesses that have similar recyclable, have similar products to recycle, is something that I just spoke with the mayor and staff about this afternoon as part of commercial recycling. So you're right on target. And I think that we are looking towards expanding it, certainly to that area. The other item is, just as Ms. Chenoweth had mentioned, letting consumers know, letting residents know about recycling opportunities, is that since, I believe, the notices about use cycle and the program is posted or sent out to every household, I think every year, every August or September, that it might make sense, as we're starting to expand in the battery recycling and into, hopefully, a household hazardous waste pickup, if not on an annual basis at least, hopefully, we'd have one that we could plan in the fall, that we could announce that in the flyers that talk about use cycle and to new households who get new pickup buckets for use cycle, that that material be on the flyers and on the website. As far as if you want to recycle your batteries, this is where you can take them. And list the locations for where people can take their recyclables. And then if they've got hazardous waste that need to be disposed of properly, that there would be a site or at least that they could call or check on the website for a date and a location for where to drop those off. I don't know, because it's hazardous waste and because there might be different sizes, if that's something that can be picked up from each house or apartment or if it's something where people would need to take it. But at least if people knew that there is one planned and were notified about that, they could at least, if they were given a website and a phone number to check up as to when they could drop that, drop those items off, I think that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, well, thanks. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Fletcher.
I do have, I do have one other, I guess, resection-related topic. Just a little update on the U-card story that we introduced in May. We have nearly a quarter of our residential customers now have the U-cards, that's been on a subscription basis. We've seen an increase in quantities of about 30% a month, as compared to the same months last year, as a result of the U-card situation. And we'll probably be coming back to council here shortly, requesting additional monies to purchase additional cards. So I just want to keep that awareness. So we're real excited about the U-card and the resulting increase in quantities we're collecting. Also, there have been some concerns from council members over the years about start time for haulers. Just to clarify that, there is no regulation regulating the start time for collection of haulers. However, we have contacted one of the haulers who has, represents a fairly large constituency in customers, and they have adjusted their start times back to 6:00 AM, as opposed to 4:00 AM. So that should help perhaps some complaints you've been receiving.
Thank you again. Well, that, next item on the agenda is an ordinance number 2004-11-143, an ordinance approving an amendment to a city of Urbana Community Development Block Grants Subrecipient Agreement for specifically the Center for Women in Transition, project number 0102-02. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Wanted to bring an amendment to council, a Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement with the Center for Women in Transition, or CWIT. You'll note, recall, rather, that this project was included in the 0102 Annual Action Plan. While there's been a bit of delay since that funding date, nonetheless, CWIT has shown progress, they've received bids on their project. Kathy Sims, the director, emailed me today indicating they expect to break ground in the next 10 days. That's good news. The memo goes on to note that we are concerned about meeting our CDBG timeliness test. I think a year or two ago, we were faced with making some adjustments to meet that test. Staff had looked at the spending rate for our CDVG program, and indicate that we will meet the required amount of expenditures to meet that timeliness test. We also continue to work with our other grantees to complete their projects in a timely manner. We'll also look at some property acquisition opportunities, again, to, to help us meet that expenditure rate. The Community Development Commission reviewed the proposed amendment as well, and recommended approval, and staff recommends approval also.
Do we have a motion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
I move to send ordinance number 2004-11-143, an ordinance approving an amendment to a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grants Subrecipient Agreement, Center for Women in Transition, project number 0102-02, to council with a recommendation for approval.
Moved and seconded, let this be sent to council with the recommendation for approval. Mr. Hayes?
Understand it's going to be used for educational facility?
Yes, sir.
What other uses will this facility have?
I believe it'll also have an expansion of their housing as well. I'm not as tuned in to, the project's a little dated, and so excuse me if I don't know all the details, but I think that's basically the summary, is the educational component. I could ask Kathy for more detail, and brief you on that, about the components of the educational part of, part of the expansion.
Well, I think in a way, it might be helpful if you compare the facilities that they have now versus what this project is going to do, and what the needs might be in the future. Because we went over to the, we did a visit to the Time Center a little over a week ago, and they really don't have any facilities like that for, for women, so... That's the last time I went over to the Women in Transition Program. You know, you've got women stacked in bunk beds, and no place to, to put their luggage or, and closet space. And I'm just wondering, is this going to, going to make a difference? And if not, what kind of plans do they have in the future to take care of some of these discrepancies?
We'll get that information very, thank you.
Very well, it's been moved and seconded. Clark, please call roll.
We don't need a roll call, unless you?
Just send it to council. No, you're right. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. I've been thinking of the wonderful things we're doing. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That passes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2004-11-144, an ordinance approving a second amendment to a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grants Subrecipient Agreement for Disabled Citizens Foundation, project number 0304-06. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved approval?
Second.
And seconded. Would you like to run through this one?
It's very similar, housekeeping item to the, the other project we went through. We did give DS, or DFC, Disabled Citizens Foundation, one amendment, but they continue to hold out opportunities for additional funding, and again, I think our, our expenditure rate will allow us this extension. CDC recommended approval, as does staff.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That passes. Well, that's wonderful. And the next item on the agenda is probably the most important, that is the adjournment.
Let me just make one more statement. I received a phone call today wanting to know about what the, what days will lead pickups? And they're the same days as, when your sanitation company comes by to pick up your other? Recycling day, yeah.
What weeks?
But I, I don't know, we saw, I think it's every other week for four times altogether, I'm not...
Yeah, I have a few questions, follow me.
I have to print it out for you.
Oh, that's good, because people are asking.
Yeah, okay, it's four weeks. The first week was October 18th to 22nd, second week is November 1 through 5, third week is November 15th through 19th, and the fourth week is November 29th through December 3rd. And that's on the same day as your recycling collection day. Yeah, it's not this week, but next week.
And then first week of December?
Yeah, the weekend of the 29th of November.
Yes, Mr. Hayes, you please stay. We'll all go home, but you please stay.